I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Go ahead and consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Sherri, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. And then a motion on the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, Sherri, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. We have our opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to come up and address the board, come on up. If not, we'll move on to commissioner reports. Any commissioners have a report they'd like to make today? If not, we'll move on to regular business. Our first item is a public hearing.
Now's the time, place for a public hearing to considering the following application for temporary on sale malt beverage license to operate outside of a municipality for John and Denise Hanson located at 34.12 acres in the northeast corner, including railroad property 29-99.5, Lincoln County, South Dakota, for a special event on September 17th, 2022.
Thank you. Is the applicant here? Morning, John. Can you just go ahead and state your name and address for the record?
Okay. John Hanson, 109 East Fourth Street, Worthing.
John, what do you want us to know about your application?
Our daughter fell in love. She's engaged. She, we're gonna, we're planning to have a wedding and tea, and we'd like to do a reception at the four H grounds. And we'd like to serve beer and wine.
Tiffany, this is a little different than most normal applications. Normally, they are doing the application to do sales of alcohol. This one is just going to be for permissible use because in the contract for renting the four H building, it says no alcohol allowed unless permitted by the commission.
Okay. All right.
With that, I'll mention I did talk with two of our local law enforcement officers to serve at the reception, Travis Johns and John Roman.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for John? All right.
The only thought is we, this be kind of a different, it'd be the first of what I would think maybe many. We maybe need to look at this as if you rent the facilities, it is permissible to apply for the application and get that into our policy for, just for future use.
Well, and I would agree, since we had the hearing and everything already published, we thought we would just go ahead and move on with it. But yeah, I think we can update the alcohol beverage portion of our policy and... You're talking about for the rental or you're talking about?
Yeah, if, if we continue to rent the facility for other uses, so.
That makes sense.
I would move to approve the applica-, oh, it's public hearing, sorry.
It's our public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor of the application? Anybody here would like to speak against the application? If not, I'd consider a motion.
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Poppins, is that your second?
I will off for a second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sherri, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. There you go. Have fun. Our next item on our agenda is a public hearing.
Now's the time for a public hearing to consider a petition to vacate the following described right of way. That portion of right of way is lying between section eight and nine, township 100, range 51, west of the Fifth Primminium, beginning at the south of the right of way boundary on 268th Street and extending south to the point of the intersection with the northernly right of way of South Dakota Highway 17.
All right. Is there anyone here, the petitioner here? Hey, you want to come on up?
Hello.
State your name and address, please.
My name is Drew Hogestrot. I live at 26848 S.D. Highway 17, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Be about a half mile south of Wildbooker West. I'm the first house on Highway 17 in Lincoln County. I was granted a, was trying to get a building permit, and I guess the road curves right where my driveway is, and the road used to go north, and that road, the curves in Highway 17 were put in in 1947, and it has never been vacated. And to put my shed up, they want additional easement setbacks. And the road that goes Minnehaw County is right there on the line, just north. And if you go west where the Blue Barn Event Center is in Minnehaw County, that road was vacated in 1962. I feel that there, this should be vacated so I can put up a building and utilize my property as much as I can. I don't see any reason why it couldn't be vacated. I think it just got forgot to be done, and I'm here today hoping we can vacate this.
All right. Anybody have any questions?
How large is the parcel, Drew? Do you have a map or anything of it?
I do. I, I turn that all into the audits office on my petition. I apologize. I probably should have printed some of those off.
This, this currently is a field right now, correct? It's been farmed?
Yes, that is correct. My uncle, Dale Geiken, is here as well. He farms that piece where the easement runs right through, all the way up to 268th Street. So I'm, just shooting at the hip, I'd say it's within a few hundred yards of easement. I'm sorry. There we go. Now we can see it on the map. There we go. Okay. I apologize here. Sorry about that. Just so everyone kind of knows where we are here, this is Wild, oh shh. Shucks. I don't know what I did. I'm sorry. Yeah, they, they don't let me touch it either. Sorry about that. Yeah, just a little bit more. There we go. Okay, this is the first mile just south of Wildbooker West. This is going to be the county line, 268th. Minnehaw's here, Lincoln obviously is just south. This is where I live, right here. And you can see, the road used to go straight, and then there was a stop sign here. And like I said, these curves were put in in 1947, and then the road would actually come over here. Then my mom lives here, Kirk Walters lives here, and this is where that Blue Barn Event Center is. And this is where the road used to come back up to the north. Like I said, this road has been vacated in 1962, and the curves were put in 47, and my uncle, who is here with me today, owns this ground here. And then this easement runs right through there, and this is where I live.
Can you point out on there what portion of the road is you want to va-, you want vacated?
We'd like to vacate it all the way up to this road here.
Just that section line, right?
Yes, that section line, yep. That's correct.
That's just pasture ground or do you find?
Uh, it's tillable, farmland ground right now. Yep.
Did you research, this has transferred over to Lincoln County a few years ago. Did that get transferred over to our jurisdiction for sure on that?
The way I understand it, it's no longer a state highway, like you were saying, so it's a county highway. I talked to Terry as well, with the highway department.
We're ki-, I just want to make sure that we're not stepping in a pile that we didn't have jurisdiction because I want to make sure that that got transferred over when we took 17. So, because that would have been registered under the state as right of way, I would have thought, or was that township at that time? That's what I'm just, do we have jurisdiction on this thing?
So I did a little research on this myself, and I, from what I can tell on, on some platted stuff, that is like a statutory right of way, what, you know, what used to be in place, 66 foot, I think is what's in there. And again, not sure why they didn't take care of it years ago. But I'm assuming all this other stuff, I think all the, if you click on all these other, the lots, the lake lots in there, I think they're all Lincoln County. So I'm sure all that stuff has got transferred over to us and, you know.
You're a lot more cu-, you're a lot more cu-
It says that it's ours, but, but even at that, you know, that piece, that statutory right of way on that section line, I mean, there's really no...
Because that, wouldn't that have been originally from a township and then they, the state came in and oil hard-surfaced it, or?
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah.
I just want to make sure that we're not giving permission to do something that we're not 100% confident is ours. I have no problem doing it. I just want to make sure that it's our responsibility or within our jurisdiction to do so.
I get that. I get that. I could not answer that question. I, I would, that would have to be for legal or...
I hope you understand what we're talking about, yeah. Given that we got transferred to us a few years ago, and this was way before that, we've got a situation where on property, we're still trying to get clear title per se on it. And I, the rest of the board's comfortable. I'm, I'm okay with it, but I would want to make sure that, that we understand that we may or may not have jurisdiction. No one, I would think, would ever object to it.
What, there's curves put in because of the natural curvature of the earth? Every so often you have to do those, correct?
Well, that would have been a, you know, the differential on a one township to another, to another county that jogs.
So we're, we're talking what, 50 yards here or 100 yards or what?
Well, let's ask Commissioner Schmidt. He would have been there when, when this happened.
We are youthful in discretion. I am perfectly willing to offer a motion to vacate this without any fear or any other from jurisdictional standpoint, so.
Well, this is our-
If you need a motion on that, I'd be happy to make one.
Not yet. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone here to speak against the petition? All right. Any further discussion among the commissioners? If not, I would consider a motion.
So moved on the request to vacate the said road. I'll second it, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I would think that whether they're lending in the institution would look into make sure it was legal, so I'm fine with it.
All right. Sherri, you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. There you go.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Drew. Have a good day. Our next item is a public hearing. However, it's my understanding there was an issue with the publication of the hearing. Sherri, do you want to tell us what happened?
Yep. The information was sent to the newspapers. I received confirmation from the newspaper that they received it. They just failed to publish it. I have talked to the applicant and informed him that we could move it to May 24th. We do have to have two weeks of consecutive publication, so it'll all have to be republished with all the newspapers again.
All right. So can I get a motion to republish this public hearing?
Do we have any other choice?
It never was published in the first place, apparently, so.
Do we have any other choice? I mean, we have to, right?
I mean, do we even need a motion? No?
I don't think so.
All right. Then we won't take any action on that one, and Sherri, you'll republish it or get it published?
Yep, it will be published.
Thanks. All right. Then we're going to move on to item five on our agenda. We're going to skip over item four since we're early. Terry, that's, it's got your name on it anyway.
All right. First item I have for you today is we're looking to purchase off of a Marshall County bid. This is for milling and reclaiming equipment rental with operator. And I guess all the documents are there. This was reviewed by, by counsel here to make sure I have all the documents to purchase off of another bid, so I guess I'm looking for approval to purchase to probably have some work done.
Anybody have any questions for Terry? If not, I consider a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Sherri, you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Next item I have is, is another item, purchasing some base one stabilizing agent off of Hutchinson County bid. Again, all documents have been reviewed. I guess we're looking for approval to, to be able to purchase.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you. Sherri, we call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Next item I have is approval for the chair to execute and to sign a agreement for the 2022 states, or the striping project. Again, this is all facilitated through the, the South Dakota DOT. So I think our final numbers at the bottom, we're looking probably close to about $100,000 for the striping that we'll have done this year, so.
All right. Heard the request. Is there a motion? Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Sherri, you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
All right. Next item I have here, we're looking to, this is a, an agreement between the Southeastern Council of Governments, Lincoln County and Lincoln County, and it's also with, will be, we're going to go into a croc, contract with City of Sioux Falls and City of Harrisburg for a corridor study on County Road 106 or 271st Street. This will run from roughly east of I-29, going all the way over to 480th or County Road 135, which is Spring Creek Golf Course over there. And again, the reason we're doing this, I guess we're looking to find a potential intersection configurations since at some point the three entities are in agreeance that this is probably going to be a, an arterial street or road at some point. So we're looking to find land use, access management, and find out to just, you know, kind of get a high level on, on when this may happen, whenever, whenever a project may need to be facilitated on this section of road. So most of the funding here is going to be through federal sources. I think we're, we're looking, they were capped out at about $150,000 total for this project, but I think there's about 30% that'll be split between City of Sioux Falls, City of Harrisburg, and us. So I think we're looking about just under $10,000, like $9,000 something, $9,025 is what they have listed here. So for our cost share to do this study, so.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Terry? If not, heard the request. Is there a motion?
I'll so move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Sherri, we call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Our Board of Equalization hearings aren't scheduled till 9:30, so I know we do need an executive session. And I am, I know it's 125, 2 sub 4. Any other provision, Bill?
Sub 3.
Uh, sub 3, yep. Just those two. All right. So I need a motion?
Move for executive session, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Sherri, you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Want to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sherri.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Need a motion to reconvene as the County Board of Equalization?
Motion to convene as County Board of Equalization.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Sherri, we call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
That's pretty.
Consider a motion to approve our consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Sherri.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Move on to item one on our regular Board of Equalization agenda scheduled for 1:30, or excuse me, for 9:30 this morning.
That hearing has been rescheduled until May 3rd at the request of the appellant.
All right. We'll move on to item two on our agenda.
Our next appeal is parcel number 250, and maybe I should explain.
Hold on, I was just going to say-
Yeah, go ahead.
So we're going to have to resend the motion that we made on April 20th? Because we had set the values at the assessor's recommendation, and now we're rehearing it, and then I can let Carla explain that.
Go ahead.
Right. This particular appeal, we went with the assessor recommendation. The appellant did not appear in person or by phone. They did contact our office sometime during the day on the 20, on the 20th. They did provide a phone number to one of our assessors, and that phone number did not make our, our list to call them on the 20th. Therefore, I'm just asking the commissioner to hear this hearing from the beginning.
All right, go ahead.
But we need a motion to resend?
I'll make a motion to resend the previous motion to adopt assessors.
Thank you, Commissioner Aaron's. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Go ahead, Carla.
Okay, so our next appeal is parcel number 250 dot 15 dot 00 dot C100. It's owned by Wilson Trailer Company, located at 415 East Oriole in Lenox, South Dakota. It's a manufacturing facility. There are a couple of additions. The original building was built in 2007 with a 2011 addition. We have approximately 160,269 square feet, 30-foot sidewalls. It sits on approximately 24.88 acres or 1,084,208 square feet. Our assessment went out at 10, 10,263,606, in which the appellant appealed that decision. We are giving some information to the commission for consideration. We have a couple sales that we felt were important with the decision-making of our assessment, two of which are on our next slide. One of the sales occurred in 2018 for 4,481,522. It's approximately, it's less than half of the size of the subject property. We have that assessed at 7,207,319. It did have a 2020 addition built on, so that's why the assessment's over the sale price. Our next comparable is a little more current. It sold in March of 2019 for 4,400,000. We currently have it assessed at 4,653,628. Again, this is approximately 42,000 square feet, so about a fourth of the size of the subject property. The sex second, or the, excuse me, the third comparable is assessment equity, just showing what, how our assessments are in line on these types of facilities. You can see the price per square foot on that particular property. So overall, we are currently assessing our subject property at $63 a square foot. The cost or the assessments on the comparables that we used range between 77 and $102 a square foot, and the market is indicating a valuation between $85 and $96 per square foot. Some side notes in which I bring into the commissioners' attention is some interior inspection was performed in June of '21. The property is valued at normal condition, as are the comps that we provided to the board. We did review the appellant's comps. We felt that the average year build on these were 1980s versions, so they were much older than our subject property. And we also felt that how they were coming up with the price per square foot for the building, they were using the land value in their calculation. We, when we compare the price per square foot on buildings, we use just the building value and not the, the land value because that can vary based on location. And this is a copy of the documents that was sent to our office. All located in Iowa and Minnesota. We did not have the opportunity to call each one of these counties to verify open market sales. I'm just time-sensitive work. You know, the, if this would have been the only appeal, maybe we would have had the opportunity to check these, but I'm not discrediting them at all. Just felt they weren't on a bird's eye view. They just didn't look comparable to our subject property. I'm going with the original assessor's recommendation for a no change. We feel the subject is less per square foot than the cost in the market approaches used with the attached comparables. So to remain the value at $10,263,606.
Thank you. Is the appellant available?
Hi, yes. My name is Derek Gertner with Ryan, representing Wilson Trailer. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Perfect. Well, first off, I would just want to thank the board for hearing this, and thank you to Carla for getting it back on the agenda. Certainly, Wilson Trailer is greatly appreciated that their appeal could be heard. I guess, as it relates to the details of the property, I think everything they hit on was right in line. Obviously, for the 2022 assessment, Wilson Trailer saw a 36% increase in their value over the previous value, and that's kind of what raised some red flags for them. So therefore, we did a full review of the property. As I stated, the building is in average condition. There's really no deferred maintenance. It is 160,000-square-foot building on approximately 25 acres. In reviewing the property, we did a regional sales search to try to find any applicable sales. And, you know, admittedly, the difficult thing with an industrial property like this that's situated in a relatively rural area like Lenox, it is difficult to find comparable sales. So therefore, we spread out our sales across 50 to 100 miles to basically find any industrial properties of similar size. And, you know, even that is limited. And, you know, even that is limited, but I think we did provide a pretty solid list of sales, um, from the region that are of similar size. And there are, I will note, three sales with years built of 1999 and newer. And basically, the sale price on all those sales ranged anywhere from $20 to $40 per square foot. So clearly, from the industrial sales that we surveyed across the region, that was significantly lower than the current assessment, which puts the value of the subject property at $64 per square foot. So with that, you know, I, I do think that the sales we provided are representative, because they are, you know, certainly of, the majority of them are over 150,000, 100,000 square feet, which is much more comparable to the subject property than the comps provided by the assessor, which range from 42,000, and then the additional one is 73,000. So I, I, I think obviously there is support for a reduction in value here, just based on the comps. And certainly, I do think it's hard. I mean, when you're talking about in an industrial property in a rural area like this, it, it is a limited marketed property. And, you know, ad-admittedly, coming up with a value can be difficult. Additionally, I think the only other thing I have, and perhaps this is a question for the assessor, in reviewing the sales that were provided, I did note that comparable one parcel, the parcel listed is F-502, but on the sales document, there was actually an additional parcel ending in F-503. And it didn't appear that that was included with the comparable on the assessor's analysis. And based on my review, it looked like there might be some additional square footage that is included on that parcel. So I guess, as it relates to assessor comparable one, my question would be if that parcel was included, and if not, I think the value on that sale may change pretty significantly. And the same is actually true for comparable number two. Their comparable includes sale, or parcel F-213, but then also the sales document that was provided, it lists F-212 as part of that sale as well. So I guess that was my main two questions regarding the sale, but certainly, we appreciate the board's consideration, and if there's any questions, I'm certainly happy to try and answer them.
Thank you, does the board have any questions for staff or the appellant? Go ahead.
Sir, when you were doing your market sales comparables, I noticed you only listed Minnesota and Iowa. Is there a reason why you didn't include any comparable sales here in the state of South Dakota?
So, so largely, we rely on CoStar, um, which is the national commercial real estate database to find these sales. And we basically start our search at five miles and then expand it out to what we can, what we think is finding a reasonable set. And what I provided were only the sales that I was, felt were comparable, based on age, size, and then obviously, we only provided sales that would be considered arms-length. So with that, we just didn't have any industrial sales in South Dakota that we thought were representative of the subject property. And certainly, you know, ad-admittedly, I think that does make this hard, because there are, you know, in the general, like, near vicinity, there's not a lot of quality industrial sales that can be used in the analysis. And that's where we kind of, usually we rely on, and, you know. Obviously, I think the sales we did provide with the prices on those around 45, it is significantly lower than the 64 provided, or $64 value of the current assessment.
Thank you, any other questions? If not, consider a motion.
I have a question.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Hang on one second. So the first acre's at a buck forty, which is around sixty, uh, 60,000 acre, but the remainder's at 15 cents a square foot assessment?
That is correct.
I mean, that's, what was that number I had? It was pretty low, actually, for assessment that way. You know, $6,500 an acre, um, for the rest of that commercial property. I don't think by far there's no adjustment ever going to be on that land but up. And I think we should review that for, for next year. To, back to the building, there, I will concede that it is very difficult to do commercial property. We just don't have the volume of comparable sales. I will agree, it seems a little high, but I think we're equitable compared to other properties, so if we stay on the equitable side, absolutely, I think we're both in line. It's just a matter, are we above what market is?
What would the board like to do? Go ahead.
In here, you said that the appellant's provided comp sales are inadequate because they're not in the same state or county? Is that your own personal judgment, or is there some kind of, uh, state statute or something to that extent that says a comparable sale has to be in the same county or state?
I mean, when we compare sales, we never use Minnehaha. We don't have the sales database. I can't think of a law that says we can, but I can't think of a law that says we can go out to other states, other counties, you know, because we're, we're our own jurisdiction.
If I could provide an analogy, I don't know if you've ever looked at residential sales across state lines compared to, you know, real estate or property on this side of the line, but property in Minnesota is generally a little bit, uh, more affordable than it is on the South Dakota property, uh, side of the line. And I think it has to do with the fact that our property taxes are quite a bit higher, and we don't have an income tax here. So there are some adjustments, you know, crossing state lines for comparables that I'm not sure are being considered. And I, I don't know what that consideration is at, at the time either.
Thank you, Ethan.
Any other questions?
Carla, can you show that per square foot again?
I did look up that second on this particular sale number two. There was an additional warehouse on parcel number F-12 that was 2,400 square feet. It would move, and the valuation for that warehouse was 69,000. So I don't think it would move the overall price per square foot. It might move this one slightly, but the assessment side, I mean, it would be adding 2,400 square feet on this, but then adding $69,000 worth of value, so it...
And we're currently at $63 a square foot?
Can we see those comparables again?
His comparables?
Where, per, pretty much per square foot? You said you were below, like, $70 per square foot, wasn't it? Or, uh, a previous screen?
Is that the slide?
Yes.
All right, time for one more question, then I'm gonna close testimony.
Carla, is it typical to factor in depreciation when it comes to determining or assessing fair market value?
Yes, that is, um, that's within the cost approach to valuation in which we are using to value this property. So absolutely, the depreciation is taken into consideration. And that would be based on the age and condition of the property on, no matter whose property, residential, commercial.
What obso, what obsolescence factor did you use? If you, if you have that available?
Well, this building is, is built in different phases. The original part looks like it was built in 2009, it's getting 18% depreciation. There's a part that was built in 2018 that's getting 5% depreciation. There was an addition put on after the sale in 2020 that's getting 2% depreciation.
So that's been accounted for?
It's, yeah, depreciation's being accounted for.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna close testimony and consider a motion on this.
Madam Chair, I'm gonna offer a motion to follow our recommendation from the Department of Equalization and stick with the current assessment.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I do have a question, Ethan or Carla. What other resources, given the commercial is probably the more difficult, um, avenue to assess, is, are, is there out there for you to, to review and, you know, better prepare yourselves and us for these types of conversations moving forward?
Much like a residential, I mean, we have a commercial handbook that we follow through our costing valuation service. We have had multiple training, um, onsite and offsite with our commercial appraisers, with the Vanguard folks who came up with the manual. So, I mean, what other resources are there?
There's always educational opportunities, take them when they're offered.
Any further discussion?
Call the question, Madam Chair.
Is there any further discussion? If not, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you for appearing today, sir.
Yep, thank you, I appreciate the board's time.
Thank you.
Have a great day. Yep, take care.
We'll move on to our next agenda item scheduled for 9:50 this morning.
This was a tabled appeal from the, I believe it was the 20th, it may have been the 19th meeting, I apologize, I don't have that date in front of me. This was ba-tabled, uh, because the commission and the appellant was, um, hoping an assessor would come in and do an inspection on the condition of the home and the quality of construction. We have reached out twice to the appellant, um, make an attempt to make an appointment to get in. There's been no phone call returned, their voicemail on their phone was full, we couldn't leave a message, but although it's still tagged that we did try to call. We also reached out, um, through their email, in which they provided through their DocuSign. So when we didn't hear back for the phone call, we did send a email stating that we've tried calling, your mailbox is full, um, please set up an appointment, and then nobody responded.
On that, no, I don't think I was here for that particular appeal. Was a motion made, was there a pending motion, and then it got tabled?
There was not a motion made.
Okay.
Are they on the phone?
No.
Madam Chair, I've offered a motion to stay, stay with our Department of Equalization's, uh, assessment of the property.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, the clerk call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Move on to item four on our agenda, currently scheduled for 10 a.m.
Our next appeal is parcel number 280 dot 19 dot 00 dot 001C. It's owned by Sun Enterprises located, um, at 1231 East 57th Street in Sioux Falls. It is a Hy-Vee, so it's a grocery store, built in 2006. We have it, um, in normal condition, approximately 44,956 square feet. There's an attached C-store that was also put on in 2006 with a total square footage of 2,238 square feet. The assessment went out at 5,463,598. This was a direct-to-county appeal, um, so it did not get heard by our local Board of Equalization. This property was also tabled, um, from our April 20th meeting, um, in regards to some income information that we were still waiting on the appellant to provide to the county for consideration. I did reach out to the appellant in, um, in regards to that income information. I would like to share the email exchange with the board.
And we haven't heard back with the income information?
That, you have not heard back. Are they on the phone?
I'm here.
Thank you.
As always, we do, uh, try to consider all approaches to value if we are, um, have the information, um, and it's reliable. We are making a recommendation to leave the assessment at 5,460,598. Our three approaches that, or excuse me, our three comparables that, uh, we are providing for the, um, Board of Equalization today are all in, um, in regards to assessment equity. So there are some grocery stores that are, um, within Lincoln County, there aren't any sales of grocery stores, um, that we were able to provide to the county for this particular appeal. Again, we are waiting for some income information. We had provided the county commissioners some email exchange with the appraiser and, um, the tax reps, um, regarding the income information prior to this last email exchange that I provided to the commission. They've just not given it to us. So it's hard to do an income approach without any actual income that we can use to, um, provide you with the information on the income approach.
Thank you.
Yeah, Madam Chair, and I, I chaired that meeting. Commissioner Poppins, Commissioner Gibbon were at that meeting. We tabled this so that, uh, the appellant would have an opportunity to provide us with that information.
All right, is the appellant available?
Yes.
You state your name and address, please.
Uh, Gabe Noller, N-O-L-L-E-R. Our address is 14360 West 96 Terrace, Lenox, Kansas, 66215.
And what additional information do you want to provide today, sir, if any?
Well, I, I won't have any to provide at this meeting. And as far as income, um, data, I mean, the only thing that we would have would be a lease. The issue with the leases, uh, for these types of properties is, when Hy-Vee builds these, uh, they do one of two things, they either continue to own it, or more times than not, um, at some point, they will sell these, then lease them back. The sales are based on the cost of the building, and Hy-Vee sets the lease rate. It's not a market lease, so more times than not, uh, these leases are not provided. What I would expect to happen is if Hy-Vee, uh, disagrees with... What I would expect to happen is if Hy-Vee disagrees with the decision today, they may just end up getting an appraisal done and have an appraisal done moving forward. So, but I do not, short answer is I do not have any additional information for today.
All right, thank you. Does the commission have any questions for staff or the appellant?
Carla, looking at the assessment history, back in 2007, we were at $5,173,000. And following year, 2009, 2010, we were at $5,300,000. Local boards must have shrunk the evaluation for whatever purpose. In 2018, it was restored back to 2,000, or $5,506,000. It was formerly a Sunshine Store until it was purchased or leased by Hy-Vee. So when you look at the valuation of 2022 at $5,460,000, judging from back from 2007, 2010, 2018, really, it has followed a fairly steady assessed value without being overboard of anything. Am I reading that correctly?
I see a lot of jumping around, and it's due to typically an appeal.
Yeah.
But yeah, the valuation itself, a full market valuation or a full assessment has remained steady. The only difference is that you're looking at on the assessment history is they've appealed it.
Yeah.
And they've been successful, and...
I don't think we're out of line.
Right.
In any way, shape, or form.
It's about 5% higher than it was in 2007.
Yeah.
Are there any?
Growth of property has certainly enhanced itself.
Any other questions for staff or the appellant?
Can I make a statement?
Briefly, sir, yes.
In response?
Yep, go ahead.
I would assume that one of the reasons that you would see that value in 2007 is it was built in 2006. I'm assuming that the value may or may not have been based on the cost. I don't know if the county's always valued it on the cost or the income. So those types of things may have changed. And as far as talking about not being out of line or talking about it has definitely improved, I just would like to remind that we're valuing the real estate and not the business.
Any last comment, Carla?
No.
All right, I'm going to close the testimony. Is there a motion?
If you'd... I would move that we keep it at the recommended assessor's recommendation,
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, will clerk call the roll, please?
Commissioner Erins?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Thank you for appearing today, sir.
All right, thank you for your time.
Move on to item five on our agenda, scheduled for 10:10 AM this morning.
Our next appeal is parcel number 280.57.01.001. It's a Wells Fargo Bank located at 3610 Avera Drive in Sioux Falls. Again, it's a bank that was built in 2006, normal condition, approximately 5,040 square feet. We have a total assessed value of $1,837,385. The assessor's office, we looked at comparables of other similar banks. With that being said, after we did our analysis, we are recommending no change for the assessment. You can see for our assessment equity, we didn't have any sales of banks within Lincoln County. Assessment equity, if you look at the first comparable, it's actually a Wells Fargo Bank, and it's being valued exactly the same as the subject property. It is a year newer, and I think the price per square foot is about a dollar difference. Our next bank is a US bank, built in 2005, being valued at $197 per square foot. It's a little bit smaller, but it is the higher quality bank in our assessment, for assessment purposes. The third is, again, a higher quality bank. It has a little more amenity, a little bit larger. And it has a lower level finish bank. We are assessing it at $211 per square foot. So overall, our assessment range, I felt that was very comparable to how we are valuing other banks within Lincoln County. The subject property is being assessed at $178 per square foot. The three comparables show a range between 179 and 211. Again, keep in mind, our first comparable is also a Wells Fargo Bank and is being...
Carla, if I could interrupt you, I know it doesn't count because it's not in writing, but he just called in withdrew.
Oh, okay.
I offer a motion to follow the...
Who's he?
Gabriel Ellers.
Confirmed, there's nobody on the phone to represent, no one in the audience? Madam Chair, I'll offer a motion to stay with our Department of Equalization's recommendation on this property.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Commissioner Poppins, a second by Commissioner Gibbon. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, I do have a question for staff.
Go ahead.
You use incomparable one at 5101 South Creek. The total assessed value is 1.264. And then on this subject property at Avera Drive, the total assessed value is 1.837. Was the difference in value due to the, yeah?
Lot size. That is correct.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to nail down, because if they were on the phone, I wanted to get into that issue. I mean, I'll probably support Commissioner Poppins's motion here. But if you are going to use same bank, same layout, but the comparable is actually what, one year older or a year newer? I was wondering why the valuation difference?
And that's why we break down the price per square foot. The lot and the building are separate, and you can see the assessment on the structures. And that's what the appellant was appealing, was the structure value, that it's being assessed equally to the other comp one bank.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? If not, the clerk call the roll.
Commissioner Erins?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Move on to item six on our agenda, scheduled for 10:20. My computer says 10:20, so we'll go ahead.
This is not an appeal. It's a tax-exempt property. We held back our tax-exempt application to the commission because it was based on an appeal. So I held off for the approval of the exemption until after the appeal was complete. We have a property owned by a fellowship of Christian athletes. It is parcel number 280.07.01.002C. It's located at 1609 East 69th Street in Sioux Falls. Legal description is lot 2C, block 1, which is a replat of lot 2A in Shadow Creek, second edition. After review of the tax-exempt application, it is the assessor's recommendation to have the exempt status at 7% for the land and 7% for the structures, based on all the information that they provided to us during the appeal.
So your recommendation puts the land at $539,220?
No, that's additional information that's provided on the forms. The actual recommendation is for the percentage of exemption. So it's being exempted at 7%. So therefore, it's 93% taxable.
Do they agree with this, or are they appearing?
We, during, they, I believe they withdrew or they went with the assessor recommendation on their valuation, and they were aware of the exemption as well. So they, I can't remember what the email exchange said, but I believe they were in agreement with that.
Is the applicant present? Do we have anyone on the phone? No, okay. Any other questions for staff? If not, I consider a motion.
Motion to approve the assessor's recommendation as to tax-exempt percentage.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Erins?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Consider a motion to recess as the county Board of Equalization?
So moved.
Second.
Take your pick.
Jinx.
I have a motion by Commissioner Erins, a second by Commissioner Poppins, to recess. Will the clerk call the roll?
Commissioner Erins?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. And then we've completed all the items on our regular county agenda. So we need to, we need to reconvene as our Board of County Commissioners. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Schmidt, second by Gibbon. The clerk call the roll.
Commissioner Erins?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Now I'd consider a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Will clerk call the roll?
Commissioner Erins?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes, we're adjourned.